...for us, I think we were around thirty or forty thousand for the projects that we had approved, but it just depends on how the projects get approved. They get prioritized for the ten county region.
What projects were those?
For us, it's a side-by-side for search and rescue.
Side-by-side and then Ethan got...
Oh, yeah.
Air, not air tanks, um...
CBAs for the Ethan Fire Department.
Okay.
Ones we're looking at in the future. You probably read in the paper about our MEAC starting on fire on our way to the here-and-dive exercise. That thing is twenty-three years old. We are looking at now what will it take for us to replace that. And what we would like to do is identify that as a regional asset. We do have regional assets. I've talked to Scott before. If you ever have a major event at the Corn Palace that you need metal detectors, we approved last year, I believe, six metal detectors for the Swiftdale Center in Brookings. Those are regional assets, so we can use those. We have a small submarine with cameras on it at Yankton that we can use. Are there any other regional ones? I think those are the only regional ones.
Sidescan, sonar.
Yep, sidescan, sidescanner, sonar. So, and what we've realized is if you have a regional asset, it pushes it to the top. Even though we would keep it here in the county, it's still going to be a regional asset. Some of the things that we have purchased here, though, is the boullards in front of the police department, the ballistic glass at the police department, security access systems in, I think we've done every school, and we did that, a follow-up one in between the rec center and the school. We put video surveillance equipment in, and I believe all the schools. We've upgraded all of our sirens to digital. So, it's been a good program. And over the last fifteen years, which is all the data that I could find, we've had four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars come into Davison County, and that's a hundred percent funded. On page five is our Incident Management Assistance Team, and what we have, several of those scattered across the state, and those are very important. What they do is if you have a major incident and you have to continue operating your office, that Incident Management Assistant Team comes in and they will do all the behind-the-scenes work for you. They're still going to work with you, but I'll use Delmont for the example. The Public Works Director, they really wanted him inside the EOC, but he really needed to be out doing his job. So, they assigned somebody to take his responsibilities in the EOC, and then every hour or so, he would pop in and check in with them. So, those teams are, and their logistics, planning, finance, operations, public information officer, they're the people that would be in the EOC. For disaster eligibility, which a lot of people think, in Delmont, this happened, of where's the truck with the money? There isn't a truck with the money for individual assistance. The way FEMA works is they have public assistance and individual assistance, and it's very difficult to get individual assistance because that's what you're supposed to have home insurance for. And for your public assistance, it has to meet at least seventy-one thousand dollars in the county and at least one-point-one million dollars in the state. And you can merge disasters together. So, if you have a flood in Sioux City, or sorry, in Dakota Dunes, and the one in Pier, they merged those two together and were able to come up with the one million dollars. And you can even contribute the damage to the roads from the cleanup. You can cover all your costs with it, but it does have to meet those. And that goes up every year with per capita. And then each project, the small projects have to be at least thirty-one hundred, and the larger over one-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. So, again, not every project qualifies. And it's for mainly utility companies, so who's our electric provider? Tri, no, the other one. Central Electric. I was thinking Tri County. Central Electric uses it whenever they have a major storm, and that's what pays for putting a lot of their infrastructure underground. They can also, they use a lot of that hazard mitigation money that I talked about earlier to put their utilities underground. Page six is the response and recovery flow chart. And again, what that is, is going to be up on the wall, and when something comes in, we go to that flow chart and see, does that actually qualify for something that the EOC is going to do, or is it not? And they'll respond accordingly. Page seven is a sample resolution, and if the disaster affected the city, the county, and the state, it just goes that way. It goes up the chain before it gets presented to FEMA. Page eight is search and rescue. We have thirteen volunteers, and we provide assistance to the police department, fire department, and really anybody else who asks us, we would provide our services to them. We have, I emailed you a list of their, of the equipment we have over there, and then I'll give Tim a hard copy. And it's a very detailed list. And some of the things that we've upgraded in the last couple of years is we bought a search and rescue boat and a trailer to put that in, and six sets of dive gear, and we're now building our dive team. And in the future, what I said is that the MEAC is probably the biggest thing that we need to focus on. And page nine is for reimbursement purposes. The public officials are highly encouraged to complete ICS courses. And we do have a couple new councilmen, so I will be sending those out to you. We have to track training for about two-hundred people in the county. So, any public official, firemen, policemen, anybody who would be responding at an incident has to have these classes. And one, two, and seven are the ones that are required for most people. Those are online. They take an hour to complete, and they're not that difficult. They're, you actually learn a little bit off of them. Three and four are in-classroom ones, and we have those a couple, three times a year scattered across the state, and we do have funding for those. And those are for more of management positions. And we have a spreadsheet that shows who has completed what classes and who is required to complete what classes. The three and four ones are the hard ones because of the four-day commitment for them. And there's no cost for the tuition. It's just the travel costs that are there. Any questions?
How exotic do we get in our disaster scenarios? For example, I'm not sure I'm going to get the poison right, but I think it was sarin attacks in the Japanese subway a while ago. You know, poisoning of a water supply or blowing up of a water tower or something like that. I mean, are we looking at terrorist kind of incidents, too, when we game out these scenarios, or is it just tornadoes and floods and hurricanes and other sort of...
We have focused on natural disasters. We sure could do other ones.
I just wonder if it would be any different.
Well, the state is actually working on more of them, more on the eastern side of the state. That deals more with the terroristic side of it. And so, a lot of people that would be responding here for something like that, because it'd be probably above my pay grade, would be responding.
Yeah, it'd be called, it's a multi-jurisdictional explosive. Were you there, too, London, or not at that one? We had a couple meetings on it.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if I can share where they're doing them, because I think they're confidential. But the one they're actually working on this week, and it's, they, so they identified four areas where it would either be totally catastrophic to the state or places of large gathering, crowd gathering. And they're, so that's where they're going to start. And I went to the meetings, and I, the whole time, I'm the one for the large gathering, I'm thinking the Corn Palace. Once they get this done, we can take that exact plan and give it to Scott, and he can tailor it specifically for the Corn Palace.
Yeah, I don't imagine blowing up a water tower would be too much different than dealing with a flood, but you know, if there was some sort of disease or poisoning, we might need a different approach. I don't know. I don't know enough about it to know where Anything with this related to the planned drill tomorrow?
We are involved in it, but it's not our, not our deal. We could have used it as ours and done it with the hospital, but we had already, we start our planning a year ahead, so our ten-county region had started our planning already. And we're only required to do one. For us, it'll be a bonus because we'll be involved in two. But if you're out and about tomorrow, it would be good to actually stop there, because that is part of it, is how do you deal with a hundred people coming up and asking questions? I told Tim, if you're out, come there, because one of the parts is to have a PIO go and deal with the media. Well, if no media show up, they don't have anything to do. And if it were a real event, the media would be there. We had four or five media show up at our dive exercise in Pier.
Here.
Or here in.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor, signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried. We're adjourned at six-twenty-six.
Hey, we'll go ahead and call the finance committee meeting to order. One item on the agenda, the discussion and action on park recreation fees in 2018. Do we need to approve the agenda? Okay, so Nate, you want to step us through it? Everybody's on, obviously, on this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and review. I wanted to also talk about, I've been asked, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold, so I'll do my best here. I've also been asked to talk about associations. We want to talk about the fairness factor with associations, and we'll talk about their fees as well. So, we'll review that while we're reviewing the fees, because they're both related in different forms. So, if you look at the, just that first page of the PowerPoint, yeah, yeah. So, first, when we look at association programs, we've been able to identify, you know, the expenses related to our associations. This will include hockey, figure skating, baseball, softball, soccer, and football as well. You can see that our expenses continue to rise. We had this conversation a year ago when we're looking at fees, how the department expenses were going up and our revenue was dropping. You can see here, we're able to identify some of where that is. The revenue has been holding steady, and our city costs have also gone up. So, what that means is the next page, which would be the cost recovery percentages. If you look at our history, we've had sixty-five to seventy-five percent cost recovery up until about two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Then we dropped into the fifties, then the thirties. And in two thousand and sixteen, we're now at a twenty-two percent cost recovery with our association programs. The thirty-two percent is the projection for next year. I don't think that's increasing from this year, so we could be right around thirty-two percent this year. I don't have those numbers yet because we just haven't finished out the season, but...
So, Nate, can you tell us how that happened?
It just happens, you know, when you add a second sheet IAS, when you add soccer fields, and you don't increase revenue, the cost recoveries start going up because you have more expenses and not more revenue. So, we didn't charge any more for it. Okay.
So, in other words...
And so, I'll give you another example.
...a heck of a deal for the last few years, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, for Cadwell, we've gone from one staff member to five, you know, since two thousand and one. So, you know, you're increasing staff over time as you're adding these things. So, that's kind of where we're at with those things. When it comes to our department, that's the next slide. You can see we've, I feel we've remained pretty steady and followed cost recovery standards in our department. Kevin DeVries has done a very good job as our recreation supervisor. He does oversee our recreation programs, the Aquatic Center, and this would also include the rec center. The two thousand and eighteen is, again, the projections that we have, of the fees that we're presenting today and that we'll be discussing. So, if you look at the next slide, again, our cost recoveries here are slightly better. Again, we were in the seventy percent range all the way up until two thousand and nine, and then we dipped a little bit, and we're down to about fifty-seven. So, we've done pretty well. Our fees that we're proposing today, again, would put us at that seventy percent cost recovery. So, kind of back to where we've been. If you go to the next spreadsheet here, everything in here is within the budget. So, partly what I'm needing from council is to know, you know, if we lower fees, I need more money. So, that's where we're at. This fits within the budget. The biggest question that we had was Mitchell Aquatic Club. How low can we go? What's fair? We determined that ten dollars per lane per hour is the fair number for the Mitchell Aquatic Club. To be at a forty-six percent cost recovery, same, very close to what hockey is, and also what ultimately will be tennis, if we start charging them as well. So, that's kind of the fairness factor of where that would be, because we're setting it at eighteen, and we were thinking that was too high because it wouldn't be fair. So, we believe ten dollars, that number, and as far as I know, Mitchell Aquatic Club is on board today. So, we're doing pretty well there. Go ahead.
Nate, question?
Yeah.
For the hockey and figure skating, I look at the number of athletes, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine or whatever.
Yeah.
What do you take into account for the middle school physical education that you have to provide ice or space for, for their PE system?
Yeah, so I've pulled those costs out for the other programs. We've got, so some of these, when we're talking about, I'm going to use some other examples real quick. We're talking about baseball and softball.
Right, but my point is that the city has to provide, have ice there or some recreation system there for the school.
Yeah, that's, and that's not the full cost, though. I mean, I pulled those costs out. So...
But you've got, you've got a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. So, that's not the, that's cost minus...
In two thousand and sixteen...
Minus the operational cost.
In two thousand and sixteen, it was two-twenty-five.
That the, that the facility is open during the school hours.
Yeah, and I pulled out the percentage of kids that were using the facility and split it up that way.
Because I've got numbers that don't look like that. That the amount of time that the city has to have open for that facility is almost more for the school use than it is for Mitchell skating and hockey use.
I would have to, you know, look into that some more than, these are the numbers that I've been working on and putting together to try to be fair, but all I'm, all I was trying to do is get a kind of a...
And I guess my point is, I'm not sure your numbers are correct, because the city agreed with the school system when that facility was built, that to get the land forever, the city has to provide PE access if the school desires. And that's not negotiable.
Yeah, well, I'll look at the hours again. I'll double-check the numbers. I'll look at the hours and just make sure that we're still in the right amount. I will do that. So, we'll just go from there. I also want to, Steve, I also want to mention with baseball, softball, soccer, football, we couldn't separate those because we weren't actually tracking. So, if we bought a sprinkler head, I didn't know where it goes. I don't know if it's soccer or baseball. So, we don't have a hundred percent accurate figures here. This is just kind of our first attempt at looking at cost recoveries. We're not trying to increase anybody's fees with the associations. We're just trying to set the Mitchell Aquatic Club fee, and then also to start the conversation. So, there's no fee increases being asked amongst the associations here. Go ahead, Steve.
No.
Okay, okay. When you look at two thousand and six, I just wanted to show you that the cost recoveries weren't even, but our per-athlete costs were a little bit more balanced. So, as you increase the cost recovery, that balances out as well. Again, we haven't determined what the healthy cost recovery is. I'm showing you what we've done historically, but we need to do that through our master plan process and work through the board. When you're talking about the city cost recoveries, again, I wanted to give an example of two thousand and eighteen, because we are going to talk about the fees, and we're going to have that conversation as well. Our department sports programs are at forty-seven percent, which was good, because that helped us, you know, look at, right now, it seems to be fifty percent, seems to be the balanced number throughout. When we're talking about the rec center, we did hire a business planner to help us out to determine, you know, how to recoup the costs. So, we're not asking for more money from the city to operate in the department. And by lowering the MAC fees ten dollars, to ten dollars, that'll put us actually at a, it says seventy-seven, but it rounded up. It's a seventy-six percent cost recovery is what I have. And then I guess we can go talk about the fees now if you want, or...
Before you do watch...
Yeah, go ahead.
Ian, correct me if I'm remembering this wrong, but I think on the hockey and figure skating, the one-fifty-seven isn't the total cost of that facility. That's what...
No, it was two-twenty-five last year, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and then, where's the other one?
It could be, it could be, I'll have to just recheck, Steve, on that, so. Is there any questions up to this point?
I just have a philosophical question.
Yeah.
Did you weigh the fact that people paid taxes once? For example, the new pool, eight million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple millions coming from hockey people, but six million of it, plus whatever the interest is, is coming from the hockey, the swimming people, sorry, the swimming people. We're just talking about hockey, swimming people. But if the hockey people wanted two million, they'd take that. So, six million plus the interest is coming from taxpayers. Taxpayers are paying for, you know, the rec center and that kind of thing. So, I'm just wondering philosophically how much that figures into cost recovery when, in fact, you know, I'm paying once already, and now you're asking me to pay twice and maybe to pay even more.
Yeah.
And Mel, and I should probably preface a little bit and say that part of the reason why this conversation's coming to you as the finance committee now is Nate's done everything he can to keep these fees and proposals within what you've already talked about for budget revenue for that department. Any changes to this, either by the Park and Rec Board or by Nate, is going to require the council to commit additional general fund dollars. So, the reason why the conversation's coming here is we just don't feel like we're in a position to be, you know, dictating that the council now has to provide additional general fund money to subsidize some of these other operations.
And I understand that, but the question I'm getting from taxpayers is, you know, haven't I paid once, and why eighty percent? Why seventy percent? What's the logic behind, you know, that number?
It's not the number. It's the revenue that's currently dictating what's balancing the Park and Rec budget with what you have coming out of general fund.
We're just looking at the dollar amount at the end. We're within budget right now. I can't do anything else without coming up. So, if I lower that ten percent, if I lower the seventy-six percent to sixty-six percent, I need another hundred thousand dollars to cover the extra cost of the new pool.
Which means everybody in the city...
Or you have to cut a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the council could just say, no, cut a hundred thousand dollars.
We've already done that. We've already done...
You don't have, you don't have a choice there. If the council says cut a hundred thousand, you cut a hundred thousand.
Which is why the conversation is at the council level now.
And we've already cut, you know, we moved thirty around for the Aquatic Club. I was able to fit that within budget to get them down to the ten dollars. So, and that was about from seventy-two down to the forty-two.
If I can jump in real quick, I've been getting the same question, Mel. And here's, at least as far as I can rationale, this is what I've kind of told, you know, obviously we collect a lot of taxes, and we make sure the infrastructure's taken care of. We make sure we mow the grass at the parks, and the lake is nice, and those are the quality of life type. But when we, there's nobody in private business that, just to a certain degree, that's some of the programs that we do. So, it is something that we have to look. But as long as we're offering and pay for the facilities with the tax dollars and have that available to people, once you have programs in place, my answer is that the people that are participating in those programs probably should pay a fair share to have that program going, or if not, Nate has a decision to make, and should we continue with fifth and sixth grade basketball or whatever. So, that's the way I kind of rationalize the saying that we got operation costs to run these specific type programs, and I think that's what we're trying to accomplish. What is the fair share? What should the normal citizen pay for the neighbor across the street to be able to participate in this?
I do want to point out...
If I could just add one thing to this. What I'm hearing from people, at least in the published fees that were in the paper, you know, the rec center membership and those kinds of things, their argument is you make, you have a lower fee, you make it up on volume. That's their argument, and if you get so high, in theory, you raise the money, but you drive people out at the margins. And so, while you're collecting more money in a fee, you're collecting less money.
Yeah, and I'll get to the fees in a minute, Mel, because I think I've got that question answered, but it's in there. Before, I do want to mention, if you look at our fees, the reason why we've been able to maintain the sixty to seventy percent for the last fifteen years is because we do raise our fees every year. The reason why we're not doing it with associations is because we're not raising those fees every year. And that's what's happening there. And you can see that we, the city gives three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars towards our programs, where we have eight thousand people in our programs, and we're also giving that same amount, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, to the programs up there that have two thousand kids in their programs. So, you know, we have to have some fairness to help us out with our programs as well, and our programs are more the public access programs that we offer, which is something, it's, everyone's included in that program.
Okay, I've got a question, since you brought up the eight thousand and two thousand.
Yes.
So, I'll look at Outdoor Aquatic Center. You say you have three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-nine athletes. That's that many unique individuals?
That's correct.
That's more than we have kids in school?
We have twelve, we had twenty-seven thousand visits, and we have two thousand members, memberships. So, we know we have two thousand, and of the day-use fees, of the ten thousand day-use fees, it's about another twelve-hundred unique visits.
At the Outdoor Aquatic Center?
That's correct.
Ten thousand days? We're only open seventy-five.
Ten thousand unique, you know, day passes. We sell in the summer.
That you've sold, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Unique users.
Unique users?
Yes.
And same in departments in sports and programs? Unique users of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen?
That's correct.
That many different people?
That's correct.
I find that hard to believe.
We ran the numbers. Yeah, we, yeah. That would be all of our programs, from our arts and crafts, our after-school programs, to all of our sports, from tennis to football, you know, baseball.
But Nate, would it, if they participated in five different programs, it would be five times and not one, not one shot?
Yeah, so that would be, that would, you're talking about the total number?
Yeah.
The total number would not be the unique, that would be for each of those programs. So, there could be...
Right, so if my, if my kid's in four programs, he gets counted four times?
No, no, not, yes, yes, you are correct. You are correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was...
Yeah, so that's not unique individuals.
But that's the same with the associations. We know that we're not counting, that's not unique either. It's, we know there's people in soccer and in baseball and in other sports.
But they pay individually.
Yeah, exactly. They pay for an individual, so that's an individual-paid customer.
Right, but if I, if I'm a member of the rec center and I go to multiple different programs...
But we apply, we're applying the same.
I pay the, I'm only one person paying, but if I'm a member of hockey and a member of Independent Soccer Association, I have to pay two different people.
And we're counting twice.
With the rec center programs, you're often paying for each of the programs that you're signing up for.
I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, the definition of calling it the number of athletes as unique individual, I don't think that's correct on this.
Yeah.
But it's potentially correct on the outdoor aquatic. Do you agree with that?
No. No, because you could be one person and buy ten different day passes.
And then I count the ten passes.
No, no, we had ten thousand, ten thousand passes. We're only counting about eleven. I can't remember.
Of those ten thousand people, how many people bought them?
I think it's eleven hundred or twelve hundred, somewhere there. I don't have that math with me, but let me look at the...
So, I mean, my whole point is...
Fifteen hundred of the ten thousand.
That's not ten thousand people. So, my whole point is that your city subsidies per athlete calculations in theory on here is not correct. And so, those numbers can't be believed. So, your comparison of your final column up here of forty-two oh three, seventy-six oh five, twenty-five, and then going up to one forty-three, seven thirty-one, those aren't apples to apples.
I worked very hard on this, Steve. I would, I would...
But just from what you're telling me, they're not.
But they are, unique users. Fifteen, there's thirty-five hundred unique users at the Outdoor Aquatic Center. We have two thousand just members only, just members. They pay a membership, and they come all summer. We have ten thousand on top of that coming, and of those ten thousand, fifteen hundred unique users are coming to the Aquatic Center.
And how do you count them separately?
You just have to run stats on that.
No, no, how do you count them? How do you know that I showed up seven times?
I can't, I can't do that.
Then the... Then the number is not believable.
Well, you gotta come up, we gotta come up with stats somehow.
Well, yeah, but you just can't make them up.
No, I'm not making them up.
But I think.
So Steve, what's, what, I mean, what's your point?
My, my point is.
I, I mean, I know what you're.
Susan, my point is we're going to get down to have a discussion of what percentage recovery should we have that applies to city-run programs, um, association recovery comparison and association programs. And we're being asked to believe these numbers as comparable to each other in order to come up with a percentage that we should say one of them's fifty percent, one of them's sixty percent, one of them's seventy percent.
So I guess my question is, how would you propose, just out of curiosity, how would you propose that Nate determine of those ten thousand people?
It's not on city subsidies per athlete. Let's put it that way. That is not.
Can we ignore the last two columns?
We can ignore the last two columns, I mean.
If I could, uh, add a historical perspective. Um, I'm Billy Kelly and I was the recreation director for thirty-four years for the park and recreation department. I was here when we built the ice arena and I'll just comment on a couple of the things. When we talk about the schools using the ice arena, they do, and that's a fabulous community service. The schools did not push for the building of the ice arena. Steve, if I could, without being interrupted. The schools did not push for the ice arena to be built. Nobody is able to use the ice arena between the hours of eight-thirty in the morning and three-thirty in the afternoon. It makes perfect sense for the school system, who's also a tax-supported agency, to slip in there and use that. The additional costs that are being generated by the school use of the ice arena is simply some extra lights. They don't do extra, uh, zamboni for the ice. They don't do any extra preparation for the school system. Those kids come in, they get their rental skates, which don't fit very well. And it's generating some interest in ice hockey or the ice arena. As far as the swimming pool goes, you know, Nate's only been here a year. So Nate, please forgive me. I don't mean to, to tread on your, your toes there. As far as the, the aquatic center goes, the city is able to show, um, exactly how many times Kevin McCardle comes in with a five-person family membership. We have the technology to run Kevin McCardle's family membership stats. We know exactly how many times Maggie went. We know exactly how many times Charlie went. We know how many times Kevin and Kathy went. You can, and you know, sometimes those numbers are not very good because maybe they buy a membership and, oh goodness, they only went fifteen times. But, so that's not something that we publish out there. But there are also other families who, who go many, many times. My point, Steve, is that yes, we do have the technology to count those numbers. I don't know that they did because I haven't been with Park and Rec for six years. But, but we do that. And as far as day passes, I think you're, you're arguing about terminology there. It's not unique individuals. It's the number of visits. Perhaps, you know, that, as Scott just said, how many of us go to the corn palace forty times in a year? We get counted as a visitor every single time we go. So I'll, I'll step back now, but I just wanted to give a historical perspective.
Billy, you, you hit it right on the head when you said it's the number of visits. So if I take the number of times a hockey player or a swimmer goes to the pool, I get to count that. And your point of knowing when they check in at the rec center or the pool only applies to people that have memberships and scans.
And Steve, I want to.
If they have, pay a, a cash day fee, you have no idea how many times that person showed up.
But, but I will say, these, these are not necessarily inflated numbers in my opinion because, we used to be able to, many, many park and rec departments used to base their annual reports on recreational contacts. If you had a baseball program that met twenty-seven days, that was twenty-seven recreational contacts. And if you had a hundred kids in that program, holy cow, that was twenty-seven hundred recreational contacts. But it was probably only a hundred kids. You're right. But it's the number, you know, in a program, they only get counted once. They don't get counted every time they use that program as they do for the ice arena or for the aquatic center. But in every program, um, they also have the technology. They were, they could run a report for you tomorrow. It says exactly how many individual members or individual people were there. So they can't provide that tonight, but I know they have the technology to do that.
And I'm, I'm just wondering for the purposes of this discussion here. You know, and if, if the council wants to see, you know, specific details in the way that we start looking at the, you know, the right half of that column, we can certainly do that. One thing we have to remember is for the last couple of years at least, we're dealing with, starting from scratch here. We also know that we are implementing our, our project toning software that's going to make it much easier for them tracking this moving forward. But even with that being said, um, at least what I would like to see for direction from the councils, the questions I hear you guys saying to us is that how do we know that that recovery amount that we're setting fees on for association is being set fairly amongst all the organizations? And that was another discussion that was just had at the park and rec board meeting. Is that Thursday, just last Thursday? Right, where hockey said, you know, we understand that the fees are going to have to increase occasionally to keep up with the, what the increasing costs are. We just want to make sure that it's being done to all of the associations and not just on one association or the other, and that we're looking at all of them fairly. I think this was Nate's best attempt at trying to look at what those costs are that that one association is generating. And then how much do we get in revenue to try to give a, get a measuring point to start from? We're certainly open to hearing any feedback or positive suggestions you guys have, but we gotta start from somewhere to have a place to move forward.
This is all information prior to me coming on board. So I'm looking through information that I didn't put together. So, um, we also are tracking a lot of these things this year that we've already started. We're going to do even more with our cost recovery with the payroll, which is going to really help us out to know where our staff are spending their time as well. And this is going to change and I can guarantee you that, that we've done, we've done a good job of cutting some of these costs where those, those are going to improve without us ever even, um, without us even increasing a fee. So.
Just being more efficient.
We're not proposing any fee increases this year. This is just the first time we're looking at it. It'll get, the science will get better, Steve, as we go along for sure. There's no doubt. And this is the best science that I could come up with this year to get us to a point to find out what we should be charging the Mitchell Aquatic Club. So.
In trying to answer that question that Mel has posed of, how do we know what we're doing amongst the different organizations so that it's not all going on one versus the other?
And I'll even go a step further. Mitchell Aquatic Club is, is a projection that we're not even going to know for three years. So that is, we don't know exactly what their costs are going to be and what our costs are going to be at the, at the rec center for another two to three years before, after we open those doors with the new pool. So, you know, this is, this is not exact science. Three years from now, I hope it looks much better, but this is where we're at today. And when it comes to the fees, I do want to review that if, if we can now. Did I, did I steal that? Yeah. Of the associations, we, we want to set the MAC at ten dollars. We feel that they're on board with that. Also, we wanted to increase CAD well a little bit, just the per-athlete cost of additional five dollars onto what we've been charging. Again, baseball didn't, um, and the clubs over there didn't say much. So we're, we think that they're okay with that. We won't sign an agreement with them till spring. So we won't really have that conversation until later on. So that's where the CAD well Pepsi complex, uh, fees are coming in. We did in. Yeah, you are. It's at the bottom there. We did increase their fees last year, if you, if you might remember. So we want to see where that came in and see how, how well we're doing this year. And we won't know until the end of the year, once we've built them out. And also, um, uh, again, for next year, it's going to be a couple of years before we really have some good solid numbers. So that's the only increases. We're setting a fee and increasing CAD well by the five dollars per athlete for the, for all ages.
Maybe just before, so if, in case people can't see at the back, this first column is two thousand sixteen. This one says two thousand seventeen and this one says, the yellow would be the proposed two thousand eighteen. Maybe everyone's eyesight's better than mine, but.
Okay. And again, we're having the same, we're going to have the same problem with the rec center because we, we are talking about projections. We're not talking about facts from the past. So I, I guess it's going to be three years before we, we really know how things went. You know, we're, we're going to talk in the future next year as well because we will just have opened our doors. So at the seventy-six cost recovery, I want to remind you that we're only needing six, for six months next year, we're, we're open. So we don't need to recoup as much cost. So our proposal to, to allow us to get into opening of the pool is to offer the twenty-five percent discount, which is only a, a five percent increase in fees. So a senior would see about a nineteen dollar increase in fees at, at the rec center next year to allow us to, um, get us to that opening so we can get an idea of where, where things are. That's our, our, kind of our solution for now, because we're still in the business planning stages and we're still working through it. If we, go ahead.
Can you take that one as an example? So the senior center, or seniors in two thousand sixteen were three nineteen. Two thousand seventeen, it was lowered to two sixty-two from where we were the previous year. Two thousand eighteen, the proposal was three seventy-five, but then the.
The twenty-five percent discount would set it at two eighty-one.
Right.
And, um, and that allows us to open the doors and really see how, how things are, how things are coming along while, you know, with the new facility.
Nate, if I may.
Go ahead.
How did that go down from, for instance, I want from three nineteen to two sixty-two?
So last year we talked about this. The memberships were just dropping at the rec center quite a bit. And so at, at being new, my first attempt was just to, to try to level out these fees because they weren't making sense. It didn't make sense that the two peo, the two person or the one person, um, weren't even. So you wanted, we only, it was only like a twenty dollar difference or, let me see. If you look at the, the two people versus family, it wasn't, it wasn't enough of, of an increase. So we wanted to bring that down a little bit. So if you're going from two people to family, you're paying a little bit more to try to encourage the family or the, the two persons. So we also were concerned about the construction as well. So we, we were worried about memberships continually to drop. And what we've seen is the memberships, um, rose and came up this year. I don't have, I don't have that number here.
And then another thing to point out is the previous rec center membership then wouldn't have included the new kind of the indoor pool. So that would be part of the reason for the increase.
It was just the, the rec center as is and we continued. I, I would say we would just have a slight increase.
So all these two thousand and eighteen fees are included, the indoor pool?
That's correct.
So I'm a senior. I don't want to use the pool. Why do I got to pay for the pool? I got that call asked.
Yeah, yeah.
I only want to use the rec center, but I don't want to use the pool.
Yep.
Why do I have to pay for the pool?
The only, the only reason for that, and we had that presentation with the business plan and is if we split the fees up, our cost recovery is going to drop to fifty-five percent in our models. And that would be a two thou, two hundred thousand dollar drop in revenue for us, um, which was pretty significant enough to where we didn't want to go down that road.
So answer me this.
Go ahead.
I'm a senior and I'm going to say, I'm going to see you later and a bunch of them leave. How are you going to get them back? Once they leave, you won't get them back?
That's what we, that's why we were kind of, that's why we were doing the discount is. Yeah, is to, is to get to opening, get us to the opening and, and let us see how things are going. Let them see the pool before we have this conversation, um, again, next fall. And we can do that until then. And before we set two thousand nineteen fees, we can review these fees and make sure that we're still where we want to be based on some, based on an opening, not based on a projection.
And Nathan, wasn't part of the conversation also ensuring that the programming is now meeting multiple generations too, which is part of the study that the master planning has been doing in the park and rec department as well. So we know what programs now are maybe lacking for seniors versus youth versus my age adults, whatever category I fall into.
Why don't they get a, it's up for next year, two thousand, a year and a half from now, two thousand nineteen? Where you're going to come back and look at it. Because you're going to get feedback from them.
Yep, yep. There's a very good chance they won't see those fees until twenty twenty. That's my hope. So, at, at least. So at least to, to ease them into it is, is what we're trying to do before. And then we can get feedback as we go along because maybe we, we implement fees and keep them, keep them lower for longer periods of time or lower for specific groups like seniors. Yeah.
Nate, what's our definition of senior?
Um, I think it's fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine.
And out, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
And out of curiosity, um, let's say that a person initially thinks that they've decided, we're taking a senior now again, that they want to have a membership and then they break their hip. Can they, I mean, it was hypothetical.
Yeah, I, let me.
Can they stop paying and can they like, is it month by month?
Yeah, so most, 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 uh, most people use the month to month. And they can do that for three months. So if, if you want to put your kid in the rec center during the summer months, you can just pay for three months, the thirty dollars a month for your child. And then you can cancel that program at the end of the summer. So most people use do the month to month.
And there's no additional fee to do that?
There's a two dollar and fifty cent a month fee for the month to month, but they can cancel anytime.
Anytime.
Yep.
So I, I'm having a, a hard time with what you're saying because you said when you came in, memberships were dropping, we lowered the fees, memberships went up. And now for two people, we're raising it roughly two hundred dollars. For a family, we're raising it two hundred and thirty dollars. How is that not going to drive people up? When you, when you raise the, the fees thirty-three percent?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, Mel, I mean, that's why we're, we're going to try to ease into it and see what, you know, where that balance is and see where we, where we, where we come out financially, you know, and I, I, that's the only answer I can give you. I'm not, you know, I'm going off of a, off of our business planners' recommendations. They're the experts in the field in terms of setting these fees. And for, for a rec center and a pool.
If we find the right guy to pay a million dollar fee, we're all right. But you know, that's, you can't find that guy.
So I, I've got a question. We said, um, we looked at the senior and we said that two thousand eighteen value is really going to be two hundred and eighty-one dollars. What's the real value for a family up to six?
A family?
Twenty-five percent greater than five twenty-four?
So the, a family would be, um, five sixty-three?
So can we? And that's because the, the pool isn't opening until June and.
And, and we only need to recoup half the cost.
Can we get the two thousand eighteen column with what the twenty-five percent numbers really are?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I have that here. I, I can tell them to you real quick?
No, that's fine. Just that we can send them to us or make it known to the public.
Yep.
I, I had seven phone calls yesterday from people that were complaining about the prices and.
Yeah, so I, but I also worry about that if we don't raise the prices, we're running red ink at the rec center providing programs and we're subsidizing it from general fund.
We're, we're, we were concerned about the, the high fee, but with only being recouping cost for six months next year, the higher cost and the bump in just visitation, people coming in is we're going to, I think we're going to, we're going to be okay. And at least allow us to at least see what's going on. It gives us a few months to actually see how things are, how things are running and, and what are, what the feedback is from, um, people using the, the new facility.
I said, I'm, I'm confused. You said that people won't see these increases for a while, maybe not for a long time. I, I don't understand. If I'm a member, my fees are going to go up for next year, correct? To these two thousand and eighteen levels?
No, it'd be the twenty-five percent next year. Yeah. And theoretically.
What people are seeing, they say, man, it went up thirty-three percent.
We, we haven't, we haven't rolled out the fees with a marketing plan yet. We, you know, that's going to come in January. So.
Unfortunately, I think that that would be fully described if the city was actually going out and advertising what those fees were going to be and what the twenty-five percent discount on top of that was going to be. But when you're not seeing that full picture, that's how the misunderstanding is out there.
I think they should put them in the paper because that's what, the seven people that called me said that, you know, I don't want to pay two hundred and fifty dollars more a year. I'll go somewhere else. I had three people that say if that's what it is, I'm.
We're trying to recoup five hundred thousand dollars in, in extra expenses.
But if you lose a bunch of people, you're not going to recoup it.
Yeah.
So Nate.
That's, that's not, that, that'll be up to, to you guys to help me out if you want.
And, and the council can always take a position that instead of looking at recovering the fees from the people who are using the faci- the fees from the people who are using the facility, you want to send more general fund money over and cut elsewhere. I mean, that's, that's the point where we're at, that this is the council's direction is, how do we move forward? This is a facility you have funded and we have in place. Our direction was operate it without any more money from general fund, which got you this proposal. Now, if, if the council wants to take funds and commit more general fund money to this to keep fees at a lower amount for one section, like maybe seniors or whatever you're thinking, that's your directive to do. But I don't think that that's Nate or I's position to dictate to you as the council. I think that's the direction you give us back at, what you feel comfortable.
My fear is we're going to do both. We're going to raise the fees, people are going to drop out, we're going to pay the general, use the general fund money. That's my fear.
Nate, two questions. One is to follow up on what Mel just said. The, oh, it's not on? Maybe it's just that. One, one point of clarification, it says on the 25%, it says the discount provided for current members for one year. What if a person wanted to come in? So is that truly just a member today or if a new member came, are they eligible for the 25%?
Yeah, so a new member after the pool opens, these, this would theoretically be the fees after the pool opened. So they're, the new members that are enticed by that, we're going to promote-
Okay, maybe a follow up question. If I'm, if, if I'm a senior and I walk in tomorrow and I'm not a member today and I want to pay for 2018, and if, let's just say we approve these, and I walk in tomorrow to pay for, for the 2018 fee, do I pay the 281?
It'd be 25% always in the next year to allow us to get into-
Okay.
Into the opening.
So we probably need to clean that up. It's current and new members.
Is it just anyone before January 1?
It would be July, it would be June.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
You see my point? It says current members.
Yep.
So if a new person came in off the street and said, I do want to join-
Yep.
In June.
Yep.
Or whenever, yeah.
Yeah.
With the timing of it. So we probably need to make that clear.
Because this will be across the board.
Yep.
For all the people who are members in 2018, it will be a 25% discount in their membership.
Then, then the second thing, follow up with Mel just said, you were indicating that we're working with Councilman Hunsacker, I believe, on, on these fees. And they've opened several pools. And so do they normally see a spike in membership or decrease or the same?
Yeah, that's why I think we can, that's why I think we can do the discounts is because we can, we can ride it through the spikes. They, they won't, they can't tell us how much of a spike we'll have.
It's no sure thing. We've never opened up one up in Mitchell, so we don't know.
We're hoping to ride it through and-
But the other cities that they've been in approximately our size, they have seen an increase?
Yeah, there should be an initial spike.
And we can't, we won't know until we're, we're open, but I, I understand Mel's stand, so.
I don't think next year is going to be a problem, you know, so I mean, we could-
Well, but that's, we, we don't know what to base off our fees now until we get actual costs. And that's a, that's a decision then that Stephanie brought up is, do we want to subsidize it more or do we want to see if the membership will pay for it? That's going to be the juggling act.
And that'd be 76% is right now.
Okay.
Which I think was lower than their original recommendation.
We were at 79, but because we lowered the fees for the Mitchell Aquatic Club, it's 76 right now.
Okay, I've got kind of a different question, and I'm looking at the rec center annual membership and we're delineating costs by over and under 48 inches. What costs go up when you're over 48 inches? And if that's the case with your six foot six, should we be charging more?
No, and the Councilman Hunsacker's recommendation on that was if you can't use everything in the facility, then, then you should pay a lower fee.
Why can't a person under 48 inches use everything in the facility?
Because they can't use the slide, it's, there's-
But we're not, we're, you just told us, we're not marketing this as just a pool. It's the entire facility. So you can't exclude 48 inch people from a safety standpoint unless you're going to lower the fee for them. Okay, so then why don't we, why doesn't, why isn't football based on how tall they are?
Are you saying, are you saying maybe go age?
I think you go age. Are we measuring the people?
We, we can't-
So if I have two kids and I'm going in to sign up right now and my, my daughter's nine and she's tall, and my son's 10 and he's short, I pay more for my daughter than I do for my son even though my son's older?
They better not grow.
Well, yeah, and then what, and then what, and so then every time I re-up, they measure?
Well, at the outdoor, like, and I know it's not the whole, the whole facility, but the outdoor pool, when you're talking about kids, for the most part, we're talking about the pool there.
Yep.
At, we have that problem with the pool. Why can't my kid be on the slide and why do we, you know, why, they're the same age, but why do they have to pay the same amount? You know, we, we have that, that-
But you do it by age.
But they complain because of the height issue.
But that's, but see, you're, to me, you're violating your, your principle of we have one fee for the entire facility. If you do, you can't delineate by age or by height. You have to delineate by age.
Would you, as council, like to see that changed? I, I think it was a recommendation by Councilman Hunsacker. I don't think it's a change of age.
But what, what, what costs change?
We, I would have to go back and ask them what the hell it's going to change the-
And what I'm hearing you say is it's based on the use of the slides.
Of the use of the slide, but we're not charging for the pool.
But you know, I think you go to Disneyland and you pay the price of a ticket and some of the kids can ride all the rides and some of the kids can't.
Well, I can tell you, when you go to water parks, you typically pay a different price.
But, but I'm, I'm using a Disneyland price.
You pay a different price. If you go to Wild Water West, you pay a different price per age. No, per height. No, per age.
I buy a van for my one daughter that won't go on the slides who's under 48 inches, it's cheaper.
The last time I was there, I ate. But I, I, I don't understand if, if we're saying that it's one fee for the entire facility, you can't delineate by height.
And my point is that maybe we do just make it, you know, you just make it the fee, base it on an age. And it's okay because people that are not, not tall enough to go on the thing, it's a safety issue and they accept that. And I think that the age thing makes more sense to people as well.
Not, not a problem. I just, just, you know, talking about-
So today, do you measure them? Kevin?
At the outdoor pool, yeah.
But no, I'm talking about if I'm signing my family up at the rec center. Do you measure the kids? Well, then how is this going to work?
You would measure the kids. I mean, you would have, same as getting on a ride, you know?
Let's just go with 12.
I think you just go by age and then measure them as they go up the slide, if they're not tall, if they don't go up the slide.
So Nate, what, what about the use of the whole facility, the rec center? Are children allowed to go into the workout areas?
Yeah, Kevin, I'll have you comment on that.
They have to be, they have to be 14 and over or trained or go through a program.
I'm sorry, or, do you want to come up and-
So how does, how does that-
They have to be 14 or older to be in the weight room or the cardio room or be trained or go through a program. Yep, yep.
Okay, so there, there is a delineation then between being able to use the whole facility, but it has nothing to do with height, it has to do with-
But if I'm, but if I'm 14 and I'm three foot six?
They pay the, they pay the same membership rate.
I pay the, I pay the 48 and under fee?
We don't, we don't have that right now. This is a recommendation from them. We don't have that 48 and under right now.
So is everybody comfortable with age?
Yes.
And what age should that be?
12.
Right now, we're using 14 as far as the weight-
The weight room and-
What would you say, Kevin?
Or you can be super, or you can be supervised, yeah, by an adult.
I think on a slide, you're going to get somewhere over 48 inches high and I think you can get 12.
The national, the national standards for a slide is 48 inches. And we use, and we do use that at the outdoor pool.
That's average age is tall.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's, I'm not sure if there's-
But, but the only thing is though, is I'm just hearing from Kevin, is we don't want to lower the age down to a weight room. So now you're going to have three levels. Are we better off using 14? And then whatever the height you are, that's, that's what you are.
And if, and if you can't go on the slide or you can't, you're not big enough to use the weight machines or whatever you, yeah, that's just a-
I guess my, my point again is we're saying it's just one fee. So if, if I want to have a pool fee, I have no problem saying I'm going to belong to the pool and 48 inches and under and 48 inches and over because the use is different. But we're saying it's the entire facility. So I mean, what if, what if we have, have small people that are, you know, they're whole grown adults, 40 years old and they're 40 inches tall?
So Steve, you're coming-
Are we going to, are we going to charge them the 48 inches and under fee?
So Steve, you-
Not if you're going to go to the age. If, if everybody's in agreement with the age, then that's what, then that's, that's a recommendation.
But Steve, you're coming up with hypothetical examples.
But they're real.
Okay, but, but let me just say, we have, we have to give the people who are doing this some, some ability to make some choices and some decisions.
Yes.
And in my mind, if they, if we're looking at this as one facility, why not? How, how are they going to say, you only have, how do they know if they only have a pool, if you've got a kid running around and he's not in the pool area, how do you even let him know?
We've paid 80 some thousand dollars to a consultant to figure that out.
Well, I know, but logistically, Steve, really.
That's their job.
I mean, that's what my point is, you're coming up with a lot of hypotheticals, but in the real world-
All these hypotheticals should have been asked to the consultants.
You want these guys to be spending all their time running around saying, do you have, show me your membership and they've got their swim trunks on or whatever, I want to know that you have a pass for everything. I think that we have to let these people do their job. And if, if their perception is we need to put this as a package deal, logistically speaking, then what's, then why not?
Kevin, let me ask you a question. So how do we police the waiting, weight room so that only people 14 years old and-
Well, our, our staff is usually running around the building. Thomas is usually in the back or up front. And, and we know our staff, or we know our, our members and our kids and, and we know which ones have been trained and which ones have, have not been trained and we've had to remove some people.
Is there anything else like the, the hot tub or the, the NordiTrak or whatever? That's-
They can't, they can't be, they can't be in the hot tub or the steam room as well, those things, or, or the pool, you have to be 16 at least to be in the pool.
And I could be six and use the NordiTrak if I, if I wanted to?
If you're trained, but usually people six years old don't come in there and do that, but.
Well, do we have somebody standing in there to make sure that-
No, we do not. Yeah, we have, we have cameras, which has really helped out a lot in, in if, if we have some staff missing or whatever, we, we check the cameras right up at the front and if there's people in the hot tub area, we can see that, or people in the weight room, we can see that too.
I mean, you know, it, the, I'm just thinking of the high school.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, we, we have seniors who are pretty small people and we have freshmen who don't have much meat on their bones, but there's a lot of bones there, you know? So if, if the use of the facility made sense as, as far as height, you know, a Disneyland ride or whatever, that, that would be one thing, but then you would have to have people in those various areas to make sure that-
From what I'm hearing, the height thing really isn't an issue if everybody wants to go with an age thing. I mean, I really don't think that's an issue. I mean, we might have, we'll have to talk to the, you know, just to, to run more numbers, but it'll be fine, yeah.
The, the height thing to me-
The height thing is, is to me-
And I'm not trying to muddy the waters, but it seems to me the height thing is more of the safety.
The height thing is basically to me is for the slide.
Okay.
Because that's a national standard.
Again, if, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but the height thing is an insurance requirement. When we built the Outdoor Aquatic Center, we bought the type of slide that you had, we, there are slides that you can go on when you're 36 inches, but we have the type where it's 48 inches. And you're right, Mel, somebody has to be on the top of the slide. That's going to be another expense at this pool. You can't just let a bunch of kids go in and run around because you've got a height restriction. You're going to have to have a lifeguard who measures every kid who goes up those stairs and comes down. That's our insurance requirement. So, but, but Steve also has a very good point. You know, if you're 48 inches tall or you're 46 inches tall, you can't use the, the weight room and you can't use the sauna, which is the exact same as a senior who says, I don't want to use the pool. Everybody who goes in there is going to have limitations on what they can use, what they want to use and what they can't use.
And I, and I will comment back on that, that question that you had from, from some people that they don't use the pool, why should they pay for that? We have people that use the pool that don't use any other, any other parts of the facility. So, you know, it's, people pay for the whole facility and they can use whatever they want. So we have some people that come in for 15 minutes just to walk around the gym, but they pay for the whole facility.
One other thing too, Mel, we do have the capability now, I don't know if they'll ever do this in the future, but with, with the key fob system that we've installed for all of our door security, you could technically put each of those doors on a different zone and give individual membership cards access to only where they have permission to. So that would be a option for them down the road too.
And I just want to say, I know I'm killing the messenger, but this messenger has been killed too. So everything that we're saying to you has been said to us at least once or multiple times.
And we've heard it too, you know, we've heard it since Friday, so.
So just kind of recap a little bit, and I don't know, what we, what we want to do is we want to utilize the age versus the height. And then we're going to go back to the consultants and, and ask a few more questions as, as we were discussing tonight. We want to make for sure that the column that would have the discount, we will show that so people will have that in place. There's, there's no guarantee if that number is going to go up, go down or stay the same for next year. Is it totally?
For 19.
For 19? For, for the, yeah, the next year's budget, thank you. This is what we're going off now until we learn more information. And then there's, there's a likelihood that it might stay exactly the same.
And it, it would be nice to have that 2018 column put in the paper. We, we've got one sitting up at our front desk because we've had member, we've had members talk to us since Friday about it.
That has the percentage.
That has the, you know, that, that has the percentage, exactly.
We, we don't want this in the paper.
Right.
All they saw, all they saw were the proposed fees for, for, for later on.
So, and we can also post that on our website and on our social media sites too, so people can access that and see what the rates would be with that discount applied for 18 as well.
Okay. Nate, did you have any more you wanted to add as far as the-
Just on a lighter note, I think the associations are all on board with the fees that we've discussed. I haven't had, I, I've talked with each of, each of the groups and unless, unless somebody's here tonight, I don't, I haven't heard that I've had any complaints for that. So I think we're in a good place there and hopefully over time we'll, we'll be able to determine exactly what those cost recoveries are and be more accurate, so. exactly what those cost recoveries are and be more accurate, so.
It's good information to have, and now, you know, right or wrong, it gets down to a percentage versus dollars, and then whatever you're comfortable with.
I have one last quick question. You haven't been approached by anybody for anything new, have you, like water polo or something?
Um, no, just, uh, well, volleyball, they came on Thursday, so.
Nate? Um, when would these new fees take effect? January first. When will these new fees take?
January first, we're gonna, we're gonna write the fees with the discount, and so there, there will be a slight increase that we've talked about starting January one, but we're gonna promote getting in on, on, getting in early, um, 'cause it'll be, it'll be good, so.
And John, we typically do a fee resolution in November, but this was a discussion that we thought warranted a separate discussion outside of that general fee resolution.
Do you have a sheet that shows what the discounted rate would be so Evan can put that in the newspaper?
Yeah, I have it in front of me, I just, I'm sorry to make copies, yeah.
That way they can, people can read it.
Yeah, Evan has it, I sent that to him this week already, so.
And Nate, you did, um, this is showing us at a seventy-nine percent cost recovery, but it, it should be a seventy-six.
It should be seventy, it'll be set, if, if you guys are okay with the association's fees, it's a seven, it'd be seventy-six, so if Mac is ten dollars and we can at least agree on that, um, tentatively, 'cause we have to write up the agreement and, and stuff with them, but, um, and deal, deal with some specifics, but it would be seventy-six, yes.
And, okay, and they're good with ten, you said that the social?
As far as I know, yep.
That's good.
Okay, and then Stephanie, did you want a recommendation, do you think, or?
I think.
Or do you come with November with these?
Well, I think you should maybe just restate, um, you've already stated it once, but the direction that I heard you give was the new column with showing that reduced amount on there for two thousand eighteen, changing the height requirement to an age requirement. What else?
I don't, I don't know, splitting the fee, the fees.
And then changing, changing words, says current member.
Yep.
Just say all members.
Any members.
Did you write that down? I don't have a pen.
Yep, I will get it. Oh, and we can always replay it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So with that, that I think would be the consensus of your general recommendation moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Nate. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
We had someone here for invocation, but he had to leave, so. We had someone here for invocation, but he had to leave, so. He waited for an hour and he had to leave. He waited for an hour and he had to leave. Okay. Okay. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Olson. Olson.
Here. Here.
Rice. Rice.
Here. Here.
Dozier. Dozier. McCardle. McCardle.
Here. Here.
Barrington. Barrington.
Here. Here.
Allen. Allen.
Here. Here.
Okay, items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for a discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items.
Mayor, I don't have anything to remove, but bringing up the, the code enforcement report, I see in the September thirteenth, it's dated, working on the owner of the building of three oh one North Main about the hole in the side of it, waiting for a plan to issue the building permit. Are we getting anywhere on that? I'm just getting a lot of questions.
I, I'm gonna, yeah, I got some answers for that, but I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Tim address that. You've, you've had some conversations with him.
That has changed almost weekly, depending on the, the owner's consultation with his insurance agency. One time last week, he was planning on taking the building down. This week, he's planning on fixing the corner. Uh, he, if, if you drove by today, he has formed up a support wall on the first wall, so I think a lot of it had to do with, with what the insurance company is gonna cover, if they're gonna cover, what he can do. Right now, I think the plan is to reinforce and rebuild that corner.
Do we have a timeline? People have been asking me how long one individual can keep a public street closed.
For us to enforce a timeline would take probably a civil action at this point. The other way to do that is to declare it a nuisance, a public nuisance, and go in with our own forces or our own contractor and tear the building down or fix it. What we do then is assess that back to the property, and the property's not worth what the assessment would be, so it would, at this point, probably take civil action, which would probably slow it down for a couple of years, I would guess, but that's.
I guess that's not what I was asking, I was asking if he had a timeline that he told you.
Wade, John, have you heard anything?
Uh, not yet. The only thing we've heard was, uh.
Can you come to the microphone?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, we did put a timeline to get the, as far as the building permit, as far as the demolish, uh, or a, to secure permit, and I think more John's been talking to him about that than anything, so.
Well, Snow's gonna fly pretty quick here.
I've instructed John to make sure that he makes contact at least once a week and try to find out what's going on.
I don't have anything to remove, but I got a couple of questions. I saw we had eight water meters changed out, do we have any idea how many we still have left to go? We're down in the maybe hundreds or less than?
We're in the hundreds.
Okay.
I think it's roughly about a hundred and twenty. Some of those are ones we need plumbers for, to get in and, uh, change a curb box or change a valve on the inside end. What our plan right now is, uh, once we know which ones those are, we're just gonna shut a block off or shut three blocks off for maybe ten minutes, go in and change out those meters, so we're not paying, uh, to change out a valve or do something like that.
Have we got anybody still out there saying they're not, you're not coming into my house and changing them out?
Uh, we have people that are still paying the fee.
They're still paying.
So that would mean that they don't want us in.
Okay, so at some point in time, that fee has gotta go off.
Yeah. I think, uh, are we at ten?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't hurt to double.
And we started at January first?
Yeah, wouldn't hurt to double.
So now we're three-fourths of the way through this.
Yeah.
So I'd say that we need to get it on the agenda.
Okay.
And have that discussion.
We'll add it on the agenda.
Okay, um, and one other question, I, we had seventy-eight million gallons of water used. Tim, do we know what overage we paid, or have any idea?
On the, on the, on the most recent BY bill, the overage was ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
We're just gonna make another note, Stephanie had sent out to us kind of explaining the sales tax, and that's included into, and so I don't know, Stephanie, would kinda walk, walk through that, what was.
Sure.
You know, reported in the news article, which obviously got a lot of people's attention versus what we're looking at here.
Right. I know it gets confusing at times because every time the state releases their sales tax numbers, they're releasing numbers as it pertains to their fiscal year, which would be July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. So when you've heard us talk about what our collection rates are, um, we're using our fiscal year, which is the calendar year for the year. So I believe, um, the state reported a three-point-four percent drop in sales tax, but that's on the state fiscal's year. If you look at where we are year-to-date, and I did, um, hand out an updated sheet for everybody, there's some more at the back of the room, um, you can see as of August, um, we're at, well, Michelle's got it right up here, too, actually. Um, sorry, I am, I'm.
One point five four.
Far off, yep. So we are up one point three-four percent from last year. I did also just, if you remember.
Five, five four.
Oh.
One point five four.
I still can't see, sorry about that. Oh, yeah, one point five four, there you go.
And the third is four point two five.
Yep.
And now that you've, you've increased the size, you can see last year for the calendar year, two thousand sixteen, we did have a decrease of one point five nine, and then, like, like Stephanie said, that was reported in the paper, the fiscal year for state is , uh, July first to June thirtieth. So we, we did take our hit.
Right.
It was in, it was in the year of sixteen, and hopefully our seventeen hangs in there, it's close.
And that's why we made all the budget adjustments that we did for two thousand seventeen when we were passing those budgets. I have been reporting to you each month where, you know, we took and I went back through year-to-date for each month, so I could compare this year to last year, to the five-year average, to the ten-year average, to the fifteen-year average. And when you're looking at that sheet, which is this one on your desk, you can see through August what our collection amount is, is six, I can't read that far off, sorry about that, I must need my glasses corrected. Um, and if you look and see what the average percent collected for the total collections of the year, so if I go back fifteen years, we typically have sixty-one percent of first and second penny sales tax collected out of the total at this time this year, and if you take that and forecast it out, it put us at eleven point four, which would say we would be, uh, we'd be short about ninety-three thousand from budget this year, which is actually really good, 'cause if you remember, I was, um, I have currently in contingency two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside for any shortage in that sales tax revenue. I also wanna point out, even if, if we do truly end at eleven point two this year, um, which would be about a hundred thousand dollars over two thousand fifteen, Michelle dropped the revenue projections for the two thousand eighteen budget down to two thousand fifteen, so we would actually collect more revenue in two thousand eighteen than what we budgeted, because we did drop it back to actual collections for two thousand fifteen, if that is making, or for two thousand sixteen, if that makes sense to everybody. Um, so right now, our actual revenue projections for the end of this year look better than they have the rest of the year, because they are up on first penny, versus second penny. Um, I'm still gonna keep that amount highlighted in contingency, just in case you don't know what's gonna happen over the next couple of months. I feel better till you get into November to know where we are when we look at October's figures, but.
I know that, we got a problem with pheasants out there.
Yeah, that's.
Fifty percent. But I did hear some good, uh, yields coming in on some beans that came in early, and their yields are up, so.
Yeah, so.
Maybe they'll spend some money.
That's really good. So just to, you know, clarify that for the, just general public, that when you hear those sales tax numbers reported by the state, that's not our fiscal year, that's the state's fiscal year, and so when we were talking about our budget projections for both revenue and expenditures, we're using what we receive in our calendar year, which matches the city's fiscal year, if that makes sense. Did I say that clear?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Any further discussion about public comment? Mary Nun, roll call.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dozier.
Aye.
McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda is citizens input. If you need to address the mayor and members of the city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes, and items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. But before we invite, uh, people up here, I wanna acknowledge that we do have five people in the audience, uh, from the Moose Lodge, and we have Doug Dagan, the current governor of the Moose Lodge, we have two past governors, Lyle DeCruyff and Bill Maddox, and we also have two young ladies, I don't know their names, but if you could come up to the podium, five of you, I know you have an announcement to make or a presentation to make, if you come forward, I would appreciate it. If you two young ladies can give your name, that'd be great. Do you guys give your name?
I'm Danielle DeCreef, I'm, uh, junior regent for the women's, uh, chapter of the Moose.
I'm Lisa Webber, and I'm senior regent for the women of the Moose.
I just wanna tell you guys, I need to come to a council meeting every once in a while so I remember what you guys all go through. And I do appreciate everything you guys do. I thought you were homesick, that's why you were here. I know you have an announcement to make, so, uh. Yes, uh, on, for the police department, on the, excuse me, for the police department, on the speed boards, the, uh, the changeable speed boards that announce your speed by the schools, um, we have a donation from the Moose Lodge, eight-seven-five, and from the women, and from the Moose Legion, so, uh, five thousand dollars, check, donation for the, for the deals. To Lyndon, we'd like to do that. And thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Lyndon, I've received nothing but positive comments about people with the flashing light and the fact that it says thank you and you go at the right speed and.
Thank you all.
I, I've heard some, some people have said they've never seen it say thank you, but that's.
With this and with the donation we got from the Elks Lodge, we'll be getting four more signs, so the next ones will be going at, uh, John Paul Two, and then, uh, we'll probably either go by the Christian School or enhance the middle school area, but these will be solar ones that during the summer, we can move them to park areas throughout town, too, so, yep.
Thank, thank you very much, Moose Lodge. Okay, next on the, well, is there anyone else for citizens input? If there is, please come up to the podium. How's your time?
If I could just explain my shirt quick.
Sure, go ahead.
It's, uh, it's homecoming week at the high school, for anybody watching, and, uh, we're playing Douglas on Friday, and the theme this year is the Olympics, so today was USA Day, so everybody came in their red, white, and blue, hence the shirt, it's no, uh, city council-specific kind of thing.
I thought you were just being overly patriotic tonight.
I, I just thought that I would acknowledge all of those that played a part in the events on Saturday. Um, I spent some time downtown and, uh, gosh, it was so fun to see the, um, the plaza filled with people and filled with vendors and to see, uh, the people, it was unfortunate though, the weather didn't cooperate a little better, but the events that were there and the band that night was fabulous, and there were people that were watching the football game and just a lot of great things happening, and, uh, it really felt like, um, like we'd gotten to that place where we were hoping to get to, so that was really great, and just thanks to all of you who worked so valiantly to get that, um, put that together, it was really a great day.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? If not, then we'll move on to the committee reports, we have about three of them, the first one is the traffic committee report.
Okay, traffic commission met, met tonight at six P.M. with three items on the agenda. First was a request from Boyd Rymnus to put a six-foot yellow curb on either side of the driveway located at five oh nine West Third. After discussion, Boyd indicated he only needed it on the east side of the driveway, and that was approved, uh, and with signing as an option in the future, so. Next was a request to close the one hundred block North Main and the one hundred block West First on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, from four-thirty A.M. to two P.M. for the City of Mitchell Veterans Park dedication ceremony, and that was approved. And the third item, the Mitchell Main Street Beyond, requested a parade permit, street closure and no parking for Tuesday, December five, two thousand seventeen, for the parade of lights beginning at six-thirty P.M. And the following street closures and no parkings would begin at four P.M. on Tuesday, December fifth. It's Main Street Railroad through Ninth Avenue, Ninth Avenue, uh, from Raleigh to Lawler, and the hundred block South Lawler to two hundred block South Kimball, Railroad Street from Raleigh to Kimball, Ash Avenue from Kimball to Burr Street, city parking lot just north of the depot. In addition, it was requested that street lights on Main Street be turned off at six-thirty P.M., uh, for the duration of the parade, and this was also approved. We adjourned at six oh nine P.M.
Okay, Public Health and Safety met at six-ten. Uh, we had one agenda item, Jeff Bathke from the county explained the emergency management operations, some of the highlights, um, included to make sure it's, it's known that it's a ten-county region, um, focus on disaster mitigation. Um, over the last fifteen years, there's been four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars that have come the, the county's way through that program. Um, we adjourned at six-twenty-six.
And Finance met tonight at six-twenty-six and adjourned at seven-twenty-five. We had one item on the agenda, it was the, uh, the new, uh, fees for the rec center and the park and rec, and there was spirited discussion.
And lengthy.
And a little lengthy, uh, but it was all good because of the fact of, of having the new pool and, and trying to work it in and how it's, how it's going to be relayed to the public, and it was determined that, uh, that we're gonna make a few changes, uh, that, uh, the, uh, instead of a height restriction, it was gonna be an age, as we're currently at the rec center, it's age fourteen, and to post and publish the, uh, the actual twenty-five percent discount that was for all members that will join for two thousand eighteen, and there was also some follow-up with the consultants to, uh, maybe justify some of their numbers with, uh, opening up the, the new pool, and, uh, so that was the only thing on the agenda for the Finance.
Is there a motion to approve all three committee reports?
So moved.
Any discussion on any one of the three? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda is a hearing on the application of Overtime Steakhouse and Sports Bar for a special event liquor license located at the Overtime Event Center for September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, for a wedding.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is a entertaining motion for the city council to recess instead as a board of adjustment.
So moved.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. Hearing on CIG Properties for their property at 1821 West Eighth Avenue, and it's a motion to table. CIG Properties is requesting variances for construction of self-service storage facilities with varying compartment sizes, 50, 50 feet to 400 square feet per compartment, with the stipulation the property be adjacent to a major collector or arterial street as designated by the Public Works Department. The variances are as follow: front yard of 10 feet versus 25 feet, side yard on a corner of 5 feet versus 15 feet, and backyard of 8 feet versus 25 feet. Property legally described as lots 1 through 6 block 3, Home Park Original Edition, Davidson County, South Dakota, 1821 West Avenue. The said real property is Zoned R4 High Density Residential District.
The applicant asked that we table this one more time. He wanted opportunity to revise his plan and to visit with the neighbors in that, in that area, so that's why he's asked for one more, one more round, to see if he could do something.
What is, what is he revising?
He's, instead of having, from what I gathered, instead of having three, maybe one, and then I don't know what the variances would be and so forth. And then also, if you, not this planning commission meeting, but the one prior, it asked about a drainage plan, and so that, that's taken probably a little longer than he anticipated, so...
I guess the reason I ask is, at some point, he's got to go back to the planning commission, right?
Well, right, right, right. Yeah, that, this is, this is to move you back. The planning commission tabled it as well, so they're, they'll hear it before you do.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing on CIG Properties for their property at 1821 West Eighth Avenue, motion to table again. CI, or CJG Properties LLC is requesting a conditional use permit for construction of the self-storage facilities with varying compartment sizes, 50 feet to 400 feet, square, square feet per compartment, with the stipulation the property be adjacent to a major collector of arterial street as designated by the Public Works Department. Property legally described as lots 1 through 6 block 3, Home Park Original Edition, Davidson County, South Dakota, 1821 West Eighth Avenue. The property is Zoned R4 High Density Residential District.
Same thing, yeah. This, this is conditional use along the variance.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a hearing on Todd and Nancy Boyd at 191 South Harmon Drive. Todd and Nancy Boyd are requesting a backyard, which is a roadside variance of 16 feet versus 30 feet, and a front yard, which is the lakeside, variance of 24 feet versus 35 feet for construction of a new home. The property is legally described as Lot 96, Indian Head subdivision, lake development plan, City of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota. 191 South Harmon Drive, the said real property is Zoned RL, which is residential lake district. Applicant submitted revised plan after publication. The backyard roadside variance is now 24 feet, 4 inches versus 30 feet road, and the front yard lakeside is 34 feet versus 35 feet.
Right. That last is, provides an explanation, because once you publish it, I just wanted to make sure that there was a, a trail to match, so. And that's what hap, this was submitted to the planning commission, and they did recommend approval of it. My understanding is he's, yeah, there you go. You can see where the existing building is, and you put the footprint. Well, and actually, the Boyd's are here, if you've got more specific questions of them. My understanding was, one of the things that if you drove out at the place, that you'd notice is a steep drop-off in retaining wall, and so, am I being correct? They're here, if you do have more specific questions.
Move to approve.
Second.
I, I just want to say one thing. It's so refreshing for people to come before the fact, rather than build it and then come, which is what usually happens. So, thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Well, we had a motion on table. Do you want to make a comment, Boyd? Or Todd?
Motion approved.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is a hearing on Tara Eldine, 176 South Harmon. This was tabled from the last meeting. Tara Eldine has made an application for a home occupation, conditional use permit to operate a beauty salon in her home located at 176 South Harmon Drive, legally described as West 75 feet of Lot 12, Block 2, Indian Head Second Edition, City of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota. Property is Zoned RL Residential Lake District.
Okay, you may recall, the last time you, you were short a couple of members, and so that's why you, you tabled it, and then she wanted an opportunity to go visit with the neighbors, and she's here. About this, go ahead.
I, I've visited with Tara yesterday, and she had a chance to go around and, and visit, and the one individual that had a letter that stated he wasn't in favor of it, he is now in favor of it. And so, to me, that was the intent of, of making sure that, that it, the process works, and I'm going to go ahead and move for this variance or for the conditional use.
Second. And can I just add, you know, I was really surprised when I found out that this had not just breezed through. I think of all the people that teach piano lessons or do bookkeeping in their home, or any number of a home-based business, home-based businesses that people have in their homes that we wouldn't think another thing about it, and here's someone who wanted to make sure that she was dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, and, and I feel like, to me, this, this is such a no-brainer. I feel like we want to encourage people to have opportunities to, you know, do, practice the, their professions, and, and if it's a small business, to do it out of their homes. In, in fact, I, I was thinking about it, and I felt like, you know, this almost seems like if we were to deny it, it would be a restraint of trade issue or a restriction of trade issue. I just feel like this is something that we should not only encourage, but strongly support, so I would like to see us all support this. I know we need six votes, right, Neil?
There was a motion. Was there a second on your, on yours, motion?
I did.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. A entertaining motion for the city council to recess instead as a board of adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to consider airport farmland lease city project number 2015-5 amendment.
Well, I, I can give you a little bit of background. If you remember back to last year, we did an amendment to this lease when we changed the field over from alfalfa to grass, and the price was reduced at that time. Earlier this year, the farmer came back to Mike at the airport and asked for an additional reduction. And I guess it's just something that he had done with other plats that, that he'd been farming, something that I, I'm told is routine in the farming industry. So, basically, he's just asking, we're putting this to the council because it's his request. It's really up to you guys on whether you want to grant it or not. You know, the, the contract price was the contract price. It was amended last year based on the change of use, and I don't know if Chad is here tonight. Doesn't appear to be. So, I don't know if anybody wants more of an explanation than that, but...
Well, I am in farming, and I can't believe that this is routine. I've never seen that in all my years that I've owned land and leased it out. I, a contract's a contract. You put it to hay, you put it to alfalfa, and it doesn't work, and it doesn't grow, and it's, you've got bad seed, you've got weather conditions. That's not my fault. It's what they got insurance for. So, I, I believe we need to stay with the contract price. You just don't change it at the end of the game. Here's, it should have been stated before in that.
Well, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, Dan.
If we change it, are we setting the precedent for the future?
You're, you've got to hope, hope people that have contracts are liable, just like
Rex Winkle that's on the south side of the corn belt, didn't get it done. Aren't we going to go after them? We should. They were supposed to have that done a long time ago. I hope that's not done. I hope we can get something recovered from that, too. So, a contract's a contract.
You know, the other issue for, for me is, and I sit on the airport board, and I don't remember the specifics, but I know there are years when the amount of the reduction is the difference between a winning bid and a losing bid.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Michelle did pull out the bid information from the original lease. I think we had five competitive bidders on that lease.
There were six bidders total.
And moving forward, I guess, this was a three-year contract, and we're in that last year, so this would be for the last payment only. It was recently re-advertised, and I think the closing is next week.
It's open next week.
So, who paid for the cost of the seed or the grass?
I believe that that was split last year.
That was split.
If I'm remembering it correctly.
It's a split between...
We also have grass contracts for landfill, for wastewater. I would assume park and rec, I know cemetery used, used to or still does, on their future cemetery. If we start giving one reduction, we may see them all in here.
Yeah, we, we had a number of competitive bids, and of course, the fly in the buttermilk is, around airports, there's a certain, you know, you can't plant this, and you can't plant that, but, you know, like, like Dan said, I mean, you know, going in with the acreages, you know what the restrictions are, you know what the, you know, various problems with farming might be, too much rain, too little rain, whatever, so.
Someone to make a motion to deny?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, denied. Action to approve agreement number A 2017-25, rate increase for 9/11/2018 service contracts.
This is based on the discussion we had with an 8 percent increase every year.
Is there any county that's indicated they're not going to stay with us, or they're going to go with some other regional provider, or...
Not that we're aware of. We know there was another regional place trying to, oh, trying to entice one of the other ones away, but we, we believe they're going to stay with us.
And I, I believe, and we'll, we'll talk about the budget and the E911 situation, and this should help us going forward, I believe. So, yeah, covering our costs, and, I mean, we're providing a service, but the service comes at a cost, and we really can't afford to subsidize too much the surrounding areas, although we do want to be recognized as a, a central location, but...
Yeah, I think we should state that we did have a subcommittee that reviewed with public safety what the cost of those current contracts were and what that rate increase should be annually due to the increasing expenses, which resulted in that 8 percent.
And I believe there's a, a comment on the capital equipment type cost going forward that might be another discussion item with the surrounding counties so that we don't bear the entire cost of, of capital improvements as they might come up.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing for collection of special assessment rolls for 2015 and 2016 projects.
This time, we're going to hold our annual hearing for, for special assessment collections. First, I'll discuss the different projects that we had. We had the 2016 sidewalk projects that were in various locations around the city. These will all be assessed through their taxes for a five-year installment plan at a percentage rate of 8 percent. Then we had curb and gutter and paving projects. We had the alley, 100 blocks south Raleigh, which is just on the west side of the fire hall, and we had the 16, 17, and 1800 blocks of South Miller Street. This will be in a 10-year installment plan at 8 percent interest. Then we had a, uh, emergency water service repair, which, what this was, was there was a water service leaking, and the property owner could not afford to, um, to pay for it to fix it, and we were losing water, water and water revenue by the minute. So, we made an agreement that we would hire the contractor and add it to her special assessment, and we're doing that at a 10-year installment plan at 8 percent interest. Property demolition, this was the one on 205 North Duff Street that was demolition in 2016. That is also a 10-year, 10-year installment plan at 8 percent interest, and then we had 2016 nuisance abatement, which would be snow removal and grass mowing, and that would be one-year installment plan. Once, if this does get approved, the finance office will send out notices starting tomorrow, and they will have 30 days to come pay their bill interest-free. I have already sent out notices to all the property owners, so all the property owners already have a notice of what their final payment is. So, at this time, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on their, on their nuisance or any of their collection amount?
I just have one thing to say. Can you talk to the balcony?
I want to talk to Mike. Hi, you're...
I am Mike Gerlach. I am the owner of property at 1203 West University, where my mother currently resides. We had a sidewalk project that was put in this year. I don't have any concerns about the cost of it, and my only concern is that the map that I was given to show where the sidewalk would be placed was on the north side of the property, and it went through three of the four of my trees in my yard. And two of the trees that were taken out were along the boulevard, and when the sidewalk was put in my property, the sidewalk was nowhere near where those two trees were taken out. The trunks of those trees were perfectly between where the curb of the sidewalk is and where, or, excuse me, where the curb is and the sidewalk is, right down the middle. So, I lost two 20-foot maple trees in my yard that did not have to be removed for the sidewalk project. And so, the only thing I've learned in return is that the city can give us two small, one-foot, two-foot trees to replace my 20-foot maple trees that were taken out on my property. And so, I have to disple, express displeasure with the city or whoever drew the map up or whoever did the concrete work for the sidewalk to take out two of my 20-foot maple trees. That'll take me 20 more years to get back to the size that they were when they were cut out. Enough said.
I'm so sorry, Mike, that that happened.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, does the council got any questions?
So, what was the response?
I don't remember, actually. This happened in 2016. A lot of our TOPOs, we do, are in the winter time, and I'm not sure if we, I mean, I would have to just go back and look at the TOPO that we did.
I would think we probably owe them.
Okay.
Even if it was just, we messed up.
Yeah.
Then we messed up.
I'm not sure.
But I think we, we owe them at least some type of response.
Okay.
I know that we, we took it out silver maples. Do you know what kind of tree it was?
I don't.
What, you said maple?
Oh, was it maple?
Silver maple, red maple.
And I'm not sure if it was an issue with tree roots growing along the top of the surface.
The, the fourth tree was a huge, massive maple, right on the corner of University and Indian. That one was definitely the problem.
That's that one.
That's this one. That was definitely the problem. But these two, as you can see, the trees were drawn right over where the sidewalk was supposed to be, and that's not at all where the trees were at. The trees, when they put this sidewalk in, those two trees were perfectly between the curb and where the new sidewalk ended up, right smack dab in the boulevard, which would have been the perfect place for them. And so, this is not drawn to scale. Either the trees were in the wrong place, the sidewalk was the wrong place, or the concrete workers put the sidewalk in the wrong place. But these two trees should not be taken out. I had to take out my apple tree, which was never supposed to be out, because the sidewalk abutted right up to the, the trunk of the apple tree. So, actually, I lost all four trees, when I really should have lost probably the apple tree and the big maple in the corner. Trust me, I didn't, I didn't shed a tear on the big maple.
Right.
As a pain in the butt. But the other two, the other two bothered me.
Well, and I apologize.
Do we, do we ever make any kind of compensation when mistakes are made and it's our fault?
Should.
If nothing else, we should give them, well, I know, a little...
Well, I was offered two little tiny maples. That'll take 20 years. That'll take twenty years to grow to the same size that they just cut down.
I lost two large trees when, when third street was lighted. But the, the roots were cut out, you know, so it made no sense to keep them. But I know what you mean when.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was no roots in the way. The trunks were only.
No, I know.
Foot and a half wide, so.
I mean, as for compensation, we've never dealt with this before because we've never had an issue like this, so.
Can't we at least get him bigger trees than one foot?
We definitely made the mistake that they need to be replaced.
Yeah.
Best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry that happened.
These are trees in the boulevard, correct?
They're in the boulevard.
So those.
Which now we're limiting, we are limiting the type of tree that can be put in the boulevard. But there's maybe a possibility that he'd like to have them placed elsewhere in the lot.
Right.
Trees in the boulevard are the city trees. And on the homeowner's property from the sidewalk back is the homeowner's property. So those ones in the boulevard are the city responsibility. They're not a homeowner's responsibility.
But I know Terry has worked with residents in the past where that does happen of maybe moving the sidewalk. So it must have something.
Yeah.
Just follow up on it.
Yeah.
And in our neighborhood, you actually, the, cut out the, the sidewalk around the trees in some places, so.
And we get questioned for that, but I, we do that because the council wants us to do that, so.
I, I just, are, are you giving Terry direction to make an agreement with this homeowner? I'm just, I, I just think you need to be on the record on what's going on here.
I think all we're being asked to do is just look into the situation a little bit more to see if we can figure out what happened.
Yeah. I will take a look at it and I'll bring it back at a future sidewalk.
Find out what happened first, yeah.
Committee. All right.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to the resolution. I just wanted, uh, I went through, through the, what the type of projects there are. I just want to just briefly go through the amounts that, um, we, we are collecting for each project. So for the curb and gutter and paving projects, we'll be collecting eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Sidewalk projects are eighty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and eighteen cents. Emergency service repair, four thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Property demolition, fifteen thousand. And nuisance abatement's thirteen thousand, one hundred twenty-five and seventy-eight cents. Some of these I've already paid since we've sent them in notices. So, but there's still a fair amount that, uh, will come in and pay in the next thirty days or we'll end up going on their taxes.
Terry, did you move on to resolution twenty seventeen fifty-eight there? Is that what you did?
Yeah, can I just explain?
Okay, we all, we need to have a motion, first of all, on the, on the collection of the special assessment rolls for two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. We didn't have a motion. Oh, oh, okay, yeah. Gotcha, okay. Yeah, twenty-two is, is a resolution, R twenty seventeen fifty-eight, provided for that collection of special assessment rolls for two thousand fifteen and sixteen construction projects. Twenty sixteen emergency water service repair, twenty sixteen property demolition, and twenty sixteen nuisance abatement.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R twenty seventeen dash sixty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Mitchell to apply for a local infrastructure improvement grant.
I'm going to pull up the staff report. I've, um, I'm hoping Brian and, oh, good, yeah. So we have people in the audience that can help answer questions, which is great. This application, grant application would give the city authorization to apply for the local infrastructure grant through the state of South Dakota. I don't know what that total grant amount dollar is. I'll let maybe Brian speak to that. This would allow them to do some of the public infrastructure work at the Performance Pet location. And the city's matching portion of that would be taking the one-time influx of sales tax revenue that comes from the equipment purchase that Performance Pet would be making and investing that in closing two dead ends that we currently have in our water system. Into a loop, I should say, not closing them. That would create another dead end. Ryan, I don't know if we have any other questions about the grant application.
Based on the feistiness of this council today.
I know, it's a little nerve-wracking, right?
Do you have any questions? The, uh, this is a request for up to two hundred thousand dollars of, um, state grant funds for infrastructure. One of the requirements, um, for this site is that the city of Mitchell would require access to fire protection, meaning a whole new water line and hydrants along the east side of the building. And part of, Jeff raised the issue last time. Part of what the state said, what, we'd be willing to take a look at that as an infrastructure grant. So, um, and the gentleman here is Eric from District Three. They handle the process of applying for the application. This resolution would allow you to make application for those funds. We have some preliminary engineering that we need to complete, but their contractor looked at this initially. It was estimated that it could be up to two hundred thousand. And that's what we would apply for up to that amount based on the engineering information. So this would run roughly a seven-hundred-foot line or more with hydrants to provide fire protection on the east side of this new building. To match that, it requires a fifty-fifty match. And sitting down and working with Stephanie and the team, um, there's a, that is a dead-end line out there. And for the benefit of that area, um, that should be what I call looped. And Tim McGann will correct me if I've used that inappropriately. But we should loop that. You don't want dead-end water lines, um, the quality, the, uh, the maintenance issues and some other things. And it doesn't increase pressure, but can increase flow eventually. And so we would loop that line as part of a capital improvement project that you would look at in the future. And you would have funding coming in from the twelve million dollars worth of equipment at two percent. As soon as that is placed in the building, they owe those funds and that would be the city's, um, share. Now, I'm not sure that will be the entire amount, um, but we would work that. And then District Three was working with us to, uh, to write the application and go through the technical process.
It can also be stated that this loop that we're talking about, the city's share, is one of the recommended loops in the recent water study performed this year.
So we're taking care of something that needs to and then having some funds to, we add, last time I talked to you about the fact that we've been adding expenses to this project. And one of them is this probably wouldn't have been a requirement at the other site, but it is here because it's a new building. And if you look at the, um, north side of, um, graphics packaging, the same kind of requirement was there for fire protection and fire safety was we had to run a line along the north side of that, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand square foot building. And it just makes sense. It's a public safety issue, but, um, in theory, they won't use it, but they, we need to put it in. And this is something where the state has stepped up to say, we're willing to help with that.
This may be a question for the District Three gentleman, but, uh, you know, having been in state government, there are, there are grants that you apply for and you have a better chance of getting it if you put the request in a bottle and throwing it in the ocean. And then there are grant requests where they just give the money to everybody and then there's kind of in-between. Which one is this?
Well, that's a good question. Well, I think in this case, uh, it's, it's probably leaning more towards, you know, a favorable response. That the fact that, that a lot of the thinking has been done on this project and the planning has been done on this project is, is a step in the right direction. And, um, also the, the fact that you do have a, you know, we, with this type of program, that local infrastructure program, you know, you really need to have that bird in the hand. And that program is meant to help, you know, public entities provide infrastructure access, you know, to businesses that are either locating or expanding or if you're retaining a business, um, you know, and those jobs, you know, they, we're going to be increasing jobs. So it's just got good, you know, there's good aspects to this project that should be looked at favorably.
Now, I've been out of state government for a while, but is there any opportunity in the ready funds for?
I think there actually are addressing that.
The state is committing ready funds to the company as a loan. There's a five-year balloon on that. It's a two percent loan. So they're helping them acquire, um, some of the equipment and will be taking a primary position in that. They're also issuing bonds, um, in terms of trying to assist, in terms of the finance, lower the cost of capital. They still have to pay it back, um, but trying to reduce the, um, rates that you have to pay for the, for the money. So there are, they're committed on that. This is a part that, um, you know, my, as a former grantsman, I think this has got good juju. If, if you, if you, if you want the language we talk about in the offices, this is part of, um, I would be deeply surprised if this, if there's, now, we have to meet their technical criteria. That's why we have the planning district to do it. But this has got a real good shot to, uh, to be able to help us, uh, perform that. Otherwise, and we have to do this on a easement. Performance Pet will need to grant an easement so that it is a public, um, water line that will maintain for fire safety purposes.
Well, the reason why I asked about the ready funds is because if they've committed ready funds, they're probably going to commit to this.
It's a pa, it's part of a package. It's never done until it's done and it requires a good technical and meeting all the requirements or they can't sign off on it, but that's, uh, but we've got a skilled team that you, uh, put a couple of bucks into and I appreciate, uh, down at District Three Planning. And Eric, I appreciate Eric sitting through our council meeting tonight.
Yeah.
He's, he's thinking about staying overnight.
Stephanie, you gave us, um, you gave us a picture of two different options. One that stayed on the south side of Havens and the other one that crossed over and went on.
Yeah, we haven't looked into the details of that yet.
Okay. And then the, the one-time sales tax, the tax on the equipment that they'd be purchasing, we would use that to pay our portion?
Yeah, that's how I proposed that we paid for that so that it wouldn't be taking, uh, funds away from already committed capital projects.
Is there, and this goes back to maybe all, is there issue with the timing on that or we can?
It'll be part of the construction project and the, and I guess I'm not concerned about the timing.
The money available at the time the city needs it or are we going to have to spend it and get it back and?
Actually, that should be okay, Steve, because that would be done through an enterprise fund anyway. So we could do that and reimburse the fund back when the state grant came back. So we'd be okay, or when the sales tax money came in.
I'm going to move to approve.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action on resolution R twenty seventeen dash sixty-six, a plat of lots X dash two and X dash three, Square Nineteen, a subdivision of portions of lot X of Square Nineteen, the north one-half of vacated East K Avenue and the west one-half of vacated South Lower Street, all in Weaver Square, city of Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota.
Okay, this plat was presented to the planning commission at their last regular meeting. And according, in that area where you see X one, there's an apartment complex already kind of under construction. And this is also part of the Clockworks Tax Increment Financing District. So what they're doing is the two bottom ones, they just want two separate legal descriptions. So if, if the, in the event would ever come up that they wanted to sell them separate, they would have separate legal descriptions. And then on the plat, you probably saw there's a vacated, uh, street that's going there on the south side and on the north, or, uh, excuse me, on the east side. But those are going to be just private driveways because they're actually only thirty-three feet. But there's still an access there so that there's, um, because you can't land lock a piece, so.
We've already got this approved with the fire as far as our circle stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Mary has approved this.
Did I, did I summarize here right? Okay, thank you.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is, uh, yeah, where did he go off at here? Second reading and adoption of ordinance number O twenty seventeen dash thirteen, two thousand eighteen annual appropriation ordinance. Any discussion?
Yes, I have, I have something. We, um, several of us, I know, received an email today. And I just thought that maybe it would be helpful if we asked Stephanie to, um, talk us through, um, she, in the email, she was concerned about the near ten percent, I'll just, I'm quoting from the email, the near ten percent increase over last year and that the sales tax revenues have dropped nearly four percent and wondering where the, where the ta, where the money was going to come from to make up the difference and et cetera. So I thought maybe we could address that. I did forward that email to Stephanie so that she would have it to kind of address some of those issues.
I put a couple pieces of information together for you and I put it also at the back of the table so if anybody wanted to pick one of those up as well. First of all, we already kind of reviewed that sales tax. And like I said, that can get confusing just because the state reports one thing and we have something different. In our, um, fiscal year budget for two thousand eighteen, so in the city's budget, we projected a zero percent, uh, flat tax from where we actually collected the previous year. So the fact that the city is currently up one point five four percent, um, means that we're up what we're anticipating our budget even to be next year. So that's a little bit, you know, difficult when you're comparing two different reporting periods, but we kind of see that quite a bit. So it's not something new to us either, but for the general public. And then as far as the increase in expenditures, I did put together just this sheet. You can look and it'll show you the two thousand seventeen budget, the two thousand eighteen budget, what that difference is. This next column is the increase from two thousand seventeen. So you can see where the biggest increases and decreases were. And the last one just says, okay, so this number here, the difference, how much is that of the overall percentage, um, increase? There's just a couple of things I wanted to point out. The things on the back of the page for you that have the handout, those ones on the bottom are the highest increase numbers. Obviously, street is up significantly. That's the largest portion. The total budget increase is three point five million. The biggest part, portion of that is one point four two three for streets and sidewalks. That would include your Sandborne project. The next one, EMS looks like it's up a lot when you just look at it at the seven ninety-one. But I just need to point out that this first highlight, the four seventy-one, we used to account for their wages differently. We put most of it into fire and only like two or three people into EMS. And we've split that equ, more equally now. So that, that true difference there is about, oh, the mayor and I looked at it earlier. It was about three hundred thousand dollar difference. So really EMS went up three hundred thousand, but a hundred and seventy of that is from the new ambulance purchase. Um, and then you can go down, again, the entertainment tax, that's applying some cash from reserves. And then you have an increase in the rec center, but you also had an increase in revenue as well there. And a lot of these other ones, the police department, we are doing a lot of capital purchases that were, uh, delayed from the previous year. And then we also have the water distribution and water treatment plant. We had a lot of new, uh, capital projects as well. Gosh, there was one other thing I was going to point out. Oh, it's important to note that we do still have a structurally balanced budget, that your current revenue is paying for current operations. You are taking two million dollars from your general fund reserves, but a million dollars of that was accumulated for Sandborne from state grants. Eight hundred, it might be one point nine million.
One point nine, yeah.
Yeah, eight hundred thousand dollars was just from unobligated general fund reserves to use towards Sandborne. And that's basically from the council, reducing what your expenditures have been the last couple of years and not fully spending all the contingency.
Two million, two million and that three million came out of the, out of the reserve.
Yep, and then the remaining one hundred thousand is for, um, your ambulance, which that was sitting in a designated account in reserves for a future EMS, uh, purchase. So we aren't increasing, we didn't add any new programs, we didn't add any new services. We didn't add new staffing. You kept your, your expenditures tight. So that increase is maybe a little bit misleading because you are, as a city, investing in a lot of capital projects, some of that coming out of cash that you had designated for those projects in the future.
Some of our reserves will go down and we're spending them down, but that's separate from the contingency that the council has out for unintended or unknown consequences.
And that's after, and that's after we let our reserve go from where it used to be at about ten percent, where I can't remember right off the top of my head where we were thirty.
Twenty.
Twenty-eight percent. I was going to say thirty percent. So that's why we let those reserves accumulate up so you could take some of that money and invest into Sandborne. Because otherwise, you wouldn't have been able to do it out of current cash coming in.
And, and, uh, in the, in the email that we received, you know, one of the concerns that she had was that. was that we wanted, she wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be raising, you know, taxes for the citizens in any way, which we certainly are not.
Yep, no, I think she had mentioned in there about increasing property taxes, and that's set by state law. That's just CPI and growth, so.
Stephanie, can you explain again the line item of the city council going up $59,000?
Yep, that's because that's where those two study issues are budgeted. Um, I, I had to look it up the other day, too.
That wasn't going to be salary.
No. The city council budget went up in order to have the $25,000 that will go towards the retail study and the, I believe the other part was the 35, right? 30,000 for the, um, community visioning session, sure, right, yep. I had to look that up, too, when I was doing this, because it looked a little odd to me at first, but. And this one, the transfers out here, the, the majority of that is, you know, the reduction to the corn palace transfer out from what we had done the previous year. So does that make sense to everybody and answer the question? Okay.
I did leave these at the back.
The back of the room. I also put together, um, just some graphic representation of how the different expenditure categories are broke down in percentages, because sometimes that's easier to look at. I got some great suggestions from council on putting together some information that just shows how much we're spending on wages and benefits and some of those other category breakdowns. So I'll do some more of that, and we will post all of that to the website, um, after council has approved the budget.
Just to add to your comments, Stephanie, on that graph of the general fund expenses by category, and we talked about this this afternoon, 30% is public works, 23% is public safety. It's a total of 53%, and that's exactly where we, where we want to be. Majority shouldn't be spent in those two areas.
Right, because sometimes there's, um, you know, the thought that we're spending more on administration, on just the staffing in there. But you can see here, this is just general fund expenses, but 53%, like the mayor said, is going to either public safety or public works, which is largely our infrastructure, and then law enforcement, fire, and EMS. And I'll keep updating these. Like I said, Steve had some great ideas of other breakdowns to do. If you, if there's something that you get asked about by the public that you would like to see included, let me know, and I'll put together all that information, and we'll add it to the budget link on the website.
So the mill level will be sometime in November. That's what I got asked today.
I have to certify the number by October 1st.
And then how long does the county have before that reported? They, they have some timeline, too, then, right?
It might be another 30 days. I'm not sure. So, but, yeah.
Very good.
I do want to make one other point that I just about forgot. Um, on the capital improvement budget, it was pointed out to me, I had an error on the first reading of that. Um, I had the, uh, third and main intersection, and then I also had phase one of the streetscape. So I have updated this capital improvement budget to have the, I, I had it duplicated in there, so I took that duplicate out. Um, it didn't change the overall bottom dollar budget, because I'm taking information and pulling it, put it into this, uh, report, but...
Reported it twice, but it's in the calculations once?
Yeah. So I apologize about that. So make sure you're referring to the documents in today's. And when we do the final, I'll make sure that it's got the right one in there.
Because your outlined document is, I mean, to go through it, it answers most of the questions that I was asked, except, and, and Stephanie brought that up. I might ask questions of like, like, how much do we have in payroll?
Right.
How much do we have in benefits? Um, how much gas do we buy? How much electricity and, and natural gas do we buy?
And actually, that's-
Those, those types of questions, because, and the people that ask me goes, well, that's how I have to budget at my house, so I kind of want to know, how does the city do that? And what are their numbers, and are they going up or down? So that's not state reporting requirements at all. Um, but it is pub, public perception and public interest requirements or questions.
And I told Steve, our current accounting software is fairly easy for me to pull that out and just create some charts off that, too. So if you hear other things like that that people want to see, make sure you're letting me know, so we can make that available to the public as well.
Is there a motion? Okay, any, any further discussion, then? Any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion? Public comment? Roll call.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington. Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Carries. Second reading and adoption on ordinance number O. 2017-14. Rezoning certain land south of 915 East Havens from highway business to, or HB highway business to I Industrial.
I'm gonna guess that you guys have heard enough about Performance Pet, that you probably don't need me to say anything else tonight.
Move to approve.
Okay, any other discussion? Public comment? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Discussion. Public comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Olson.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Dosher. McCardle.
Aye.
Barrington. Allen. Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Are there second to that motion? Discussion, or, all, all those in favor, say, say aye. We are adjourned. Good night.